Roll call please.
Councilmember Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Proton Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Oparano.
Here.
And councilmember Mendoza and Obi Garantinas is absent, are absent for the record.
Please, um, then for please.
I gladly can signify. Six. And to be public which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty changes.
All right. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, item A1, the, the, uh, football team could not be present. They called us and let us know they would not be present, so they'll be, we'll be seeing them at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Make a note on that. Um, how about city attorney reporter from closed session?
Yes, the council met in closed session and discussed, uh, conference with real property negotiator regarding the APN 061143002. Um, instructions were given to the negotiator regarding price and terms. Council discussed one item of, excuse me, significant exposure to litigation. And, uh, the council also discussed, uh, labor negotiations as listed on the agenda and gave direction. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to public comments, there's a three, there's a time limit of three minutes for anyone, anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. So matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address city council concerning any item from the city council jurisdiction, please raise your hand, be addressed, be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. As it requested, long, longer presentation be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing 48 hours before the meeting. I do have two, uh, forms here. The first one by, uh, Ms. Joanne Hettinger.
Good evening. Joanne Hettinger, 605 North H and Imperial. Is that what you all you?
Yeah, thank you.
Name and address, I couldn't remember.
We need your birthday.
Put all the directions on my birthday.
Need your birthday and.
Oh, no, you don't want that.
We won't ask for bank accounts either.
Okay. Um, I'm here because as all of you know, well, you may not know her well, but Mrs. Marion Long passed away this past week. And she was such a supporter of Imperial and Christmas in a small town and everything. We wanted to see if we could honor her that night or that day, preferably in the daytime, because do we start at one o'clock that day?
Yes.
I think it's one o'clock, right, Tony?
The what?
Christmas in a small town?
Yes, it's from one to five, yes.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, we wanted to, um, honor her that day if we could. And what we are suggesting is that we get someone to read the poem. It was in the Facebook post. Read the poem and maybe talk a little bit about her before the, I think the Ben Hall's children are supposed to be singing that day too. And that was her big thing. She was always in charge of that. She led the singing and she sang and everything. And so we wanted to see if we could have her on stage with the kids, not her, but have the person we're going to have speak on stage with her. And, um, talk and read the poem and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I will work something out. I think that's doable.
We have, we have someone who will, who will speak. It's one of the teachers who taught with her.
Okay. Yeah, if we can get that information, that's where we can pass it on to Mr. Marito and we can.
Yeah, good. All right. And say, Tony, I promise you, she already has it planned out what they want to do. So I'm going to encourage you to just listen. And say yes.
That works. Thank you. Next public comment I have is from Brenda, Brenda Pierce.
Hello, good evening. So my, our fence was ta, oh, Brenda Pierce, 520 West Barione in Imperial. Um, our fence was tagged. We got notice. I had already called the police officer to come out. We got a case number and all that stuff. But we've received a letter and the letter's a little confusing. It talks about you have 30 days and you have 15 days and then you have 10 days to get it done and all of this stuff. So it needs to be a little more concise as to the actual date. And then it mentions calendar days as opposed to business day or some of them business days for the 30 days or the 15 days and or the 10 days calendar days or not days. So it was just confusing. Um, we've taken care of it. But my concern is all of these people, I mean, you guys have seen the city of Imperial getting tagged like crazy lately. If, if you haven't, drive around. So I know two elderly people that have gotten tagged. Two of them don't have the means to take care of it. They're 85 years old, 87 years old. So what does the city propose to do about the graffiti on these people's properties? Where they can't take care of it. That's something that you guys need to address because we can't let it sit there, but they can't take care of it. They shouldn't be charged for it for reimbursement of time and materials because most elderly people are on fixed incomes. So I want to know what the city is going to do.
We, I, we obviously have your contact information in the past. The city has had programs to assist folks who weren't in a position to address graffiti that appeared on their property. So we'll get the details.
From, from everything that I've read through the documents in the city of Imperial, it gets charged back to the homeowner. Or there's a lean place and there's fines imposed.
Right.
For, for some of these people, they don't know how to respond to you guys. They're not in a position to be able to respond to you guys. So what do they do at that point?
So the, this situation has arisen in the past and, and like I said, the city has, has, uh, has programs in place to assist folks in that, in that position.
Maybe that needs to be spelled out in the letter that you guys send out.
Well, usually those discussions happen after, as opposed to saying to somebody graffiti, there's a condition on your property. It's the owner's responsible.
Mm-hmm.
I think typically what would happen if we were, were to say in that letter, but don't worry about it, the city fellow taxpayers will pay to repair your property, that, that causes issues, all a separate set of issues.
Okay.
So, um, we, we have addressed it in the past and to the extent those, the situation that you described exists.
Okay, then you guys can contact me on that for the people that I'm talking about.
Right.
So then what's being done on law enforcement level to take care of all these graffiti artists that are roaming around town tagging everybody?
It's a difficult task because it's a crime of opportunity and they're out, they're on foot. When we do come into contact with, uh, juveniles and adults that are possessing vandalism materials, there's certain regulations that we can enforce. As far as identifying particular individuals for past occurred vandalism, it's a little bit more difficult. Um, because of this, the, the use of monikers, the use of particular standardized gang language, gang identifiers. One kid does the same thing as the next kid, next, next kid. It's, it's, it's difficult to identify past occurred. But it's, it's also difficult to try, try to catch them in the act.
So have you guys gone to property owners or neighbors who have ring cameras or cameras around their property to see if they've caught anything?
And so that's one of the investigative steps that we're in the process of implementing. Remedo's not here, but it, it, we're looking forward to implementing some assistance with, it's an interactive role between the police department and the community with registering cameras. So we can make it easier for law enforcement to identify homes that do have cameras in the event of any past occurred.
Okay, because I have one, two, three, four, I have four cameras on my house before this happened. And none that were close to facing the fence. And I've added three more cameras that will capture anything around my house. So.
Hopefully at one point we'll be able to register additional cameras with.
Okay. And I would encourage anybody in the city of Imperial to put up cameras on your house because this is going to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we, do we have any other public comments? Get any via email?
No, via email.
Move on to item A presentations, A2, presentation by Republic Services regarding residential reroute.
Oh, it's been a minute. Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. I would like to first thank you for this time. And I would also like to introduce myself. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Shirley Moreno. I'm the new operations manager for Republic Services here in the Imperial Valley. I've been with Republic Services for 20 years and I've held various positions within the company. Um, and then moving on, uh, the reason I, I have a short presentation, uh, this presentation is for a reroute that we want to implement, uh, mid-January. And the purpose for, uh, the reroute is we have seen an increase in, uh, volume waste and that's due to the increase of new homes, um, here in the city of Imperial, which I think we all know. Um, so we found it necessary to make a reroute, which would include changing the days for some service, uh, some of the service areas here in the city of Imperial. Now, let's see. How do I work this? All right, this is my first time doing this. There we go. Uh, so the purpose there is increasing waste volume to, due to addition of new homes over the last couple of years. So we have identified the areas that we would like to change over. Um, and on the following slides I'll have, uh, some maps. But it would be, uh, south of Nackle Road to 15th Street. And then we would continue further, uh, and then it would be from Rodeo to Clark Road. And then we'd continue further south from Fifth Street to Second Street, from P Street to J Street. Uh, there is a cup, about 140 customers. The previous one that I mentioned was about 420 customers. Then we would continue, um, east of Clark Road, the new, newer subdivision, uh, we have approximately 290 customers there. Um, those would be the three areas that we would shift over, uh, to a new service day. So I know it's not the prettiest map and I promise you next time I come, it'll be a little bit more legible. But here we have Nackle to 15th Street from Clark to Rodeo. And then 15th Street down to First and then cornering J to P or Clark's, or Clark Road. And then the third one that I mentioned, which would be, uh, east of Clark Road all the way down to Meadow Brook. Um, so it, it would be all that area. So in total, we have about 850 customers or residents that, um, it, this change would affect. Um, the service day change, we wa, we would like to implement it the week of January 19th, 2025. Currently, uh, the areas I mentioned, we service on Wednesday. Their new service day would be on Thursday. Notification, uh, we would notify, oops, we would notify. Sorry. We would notify customers by placing postcards on the trash cart on Wednesday, January 8th, which would be two weeks prior to the effective service day change. The next slide. I apologize. Oh, the next slide, um, it's a sample of the postcard. This is what the postcard looks like. It's printed both in English and Spanish and it includes our local office numbers in case there's any further questions or they need additional, uh, information. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Um, what days do you guys operate in Imperial now?
Currently we do Wednesday and we service north of Nackle on Thursdays.
Sorry, we're just trying to get our bearings of the area. So just those, those three sections are going to.
So, so then you set, so the near, so most of Imperial goes on Wednesday. Now we would have north of Nackle. Uh, we would have south of Nackle all the way down to Second Street and then east of Clark Road.
That would go on Thursday.
That would go on Thursday. Everything else remains on Wednesday.
Can you guys provide that information? So when you guys share it, that way we can share it on our website and social media as well.
Sure. The only thing, uh, we tried to prevent so there wouldn't be any confusion. The last time we did this was five years ago, I mean, 2019. Since then, there's been growth of about approximately 800 homes. So it's an ongoing, uh, process, you know, as new homes start coming in, we'll find the need to, uh, to reroute again. But we can definitely share the information.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Next presentation, A3 Quarterly Q1 Budget Presentation by Victor Monriquez, Administrative Services Director.
Good evening, council, uh, Mayor, council. Uh, this is a first quarter budgetly report for fiscal year 2425. Um, this is a overview, uh, instead of getting into the gritty, needy detail that I always provide, so that will be coming later late. This is just to, um, give you guidance, uh, where we at, where we stand from, uh, July to September. And see if there are any questions, uh, that I, if you have any questions, then I can address at the time of, uh, actually presenting the item. Um, as I mentioned, this is just an update, uh, for the first three months. Uh, the quarterly update, uh, serves as a warning for everybody, for myself, for yourself, for public, in case they have any questions, um, to, um, keep everything on track, to see if something's, uh, went sideways, uh, we can, uh, get in, get, get it back in line, uh, as soon as possible. Um, our summary for the general fund, uh, currently we are at, uh, the expenses are at 20% of budgeted. Um, the revenues are at 16%. So right now, if you see, uh, the math, we would be at a deficit, but that's, uh, usually, um, the trend for quarter one. Um, all other funds are consistent with city budget, uh, for all, all the non-general funds. Currently for our HR, our FTE, so Q1 continue at the authorized, um, budget. And I do want to make a note, um, for the budget, uh, we presented, uh, 157 positions. That was incorrect. The correct position is one. Uh, we presented, uh, one hundred and fifty-seven positions. That was incorrect. The correct position is one forty-nine seventy-five. So it's not that we added or removed, it's just it was a calculation error when it was presented. So the actual current uh, FTEs, um, it's one forty-nine seventy-five. And currently we have ten on field positions, S of nine thirty. This will be the quarter one requested budget changes, uh, that we have, uh, done. Uh, two payments increased for developers, um, that was already approved by council at the time, but it wasn't, it didn't go through the budget changes. So we would need to adjust that, uh, for next council meeting. Um, the list of budget transfers, that's just regular, um, bookkeeping that we just need to convert from one fund to the other, or it was placed in a different, uh, line item. So there's no fiscal impact of that. It's just making more corrections, going more into detail where the expenses should be going and all that. So we can have a more clear tracking throughout the year. Uh, for HR, there are some, um, position changes. Um, we are requesting to remove one recreation specialist and actually not remove, convert, which is removing one, um, recreation specialist allocation and adding a park maintenance worker. There's no fiscal impact there. They're, um, at the same rate, at the same, uh, range, sorry. Uh, also, we are requesting to remove, uh, four operating training positions and convert them to water and treatment operator one, that will be one, and three general maintenance worker threes. And staying there, there's no fiscal impact, it's the same range, uh, so it wouldn't be affecting the budget or request an increase. It's just more, uh, the classification of that position. Any questions?
So far it's good news.
Okay. So for our investment in, uh, portfolio for Q one, uh, general fund still stands at six point six million, uh, as provided and, um, when we closed out the investment policy last week, uh, for overall for the city, we are at fifty point six million at Q one. And as I mentioned, six point six belongs to general fund. Um, with the change to the investment policy, uh, would not change, the updated investment policy that, uh, council approved last week, we are looking to be a bit of, bit more cautious and diversified our investment, uh, which currently sits in, uh, late most of it. We are getting very good returns, but, uh, those are not guaranteed or locked in for, uh, the upcoming years. And based on there's five-year CIP budget, we just need to have a better tracking and better understanding of, uh, when we are going to be using those monies and guarantee their returns. Next slide. Our reserves, uh, for Q one, um, like I mentioned, it's six point six, uh, which represents, uh, basically a thirty-eight, uh, emergency reserve. Uh, roughly translating into five months of operating budget. And our minimum we strive to have is twenty-five percent, which is a three-month, uh, operating reserve. So right now there's no danger in, um, going under that as to GOAF, uh, standards. So we're good there. Uh, this would be the, um, general fund at Q one. Um, currently, as I mentioned, the expenses are at, um, sorry, those as the revenues, the revenues is two point seven that we should have, um, received for Q one, which is about sixteen percent of the budgeted amount. Uh, and the expenditures are at three point nine, which is a thirty-three percent. Currently, there is a deficit for the first quarter cash flow wise, not cash flow, but, uh, balance sheet wise, uh, at one point, uh, two, which is typical for quarter one. It's timing issues, uh, when the revenues, um, come in. So if you can see the past year, um, except for the past year, um, they're all around the same, um, amount. Any questions?
Sir?
For, um, water fund, uh, same, um, numbers for Q one. The revenues are at one point nine and the expenses are at two point three million, which is a net of, uh, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Um, water revenues, it depends on the expenses and projects they had at the time, um. We have been positive the last couple of years, but, uh, this year's we're going back to the regular amount that we are, um, expecting. Uh, so still, it's in the red, but it's, uh, on track to what we were expecting. Waste water at Q one, um, this one's a little bit different. This is the first time we come, uh, negative in the last five years. Our revenues are at one point six, which is still on track and our expenses at two point two. Uh, I do want to mention, uh, for water and wastewater, um, one of the big changes that, um, came about was, um, when I was creating the budget, um, we, the liabilities and all the things that general fund used to carry for insurance liability got, um, proportionate amounts to where it belongs. So this is the first year, the water and wastewater, so that's why it's negative at the same time. So I did forget to mention that, uh, part, otherwise it would be probably at, at net. But again, those, these are quarter one, um, hit expenses, so it should level out with, um, in the upcoming quarters because those are not recurrent as one-time hits. For balance sheet, um, even though they're negative, they're, uh, the first quarter for, uh, enterprise zones, which are waste and, uh, water funds. Uh, water fund is at eight point six million. That's, um, over two point three million more than last year at first quarter. And for wastewater, we are at, uh, a little bit over twelve million, which is one million more than last quarter. So overall, uh, water and wastewater are doing pretty good. Our CF, our community develop, our community facilities, district CFDs. Um, as always, the first quarters will look red as those revenues come in into the second quarter, sometimes even the third quarter. Uh, but this is a comparison for last year. It's pretty much the same amount, uh, for all six. Uh, we have here Braden, uh, Mayfield and Monterey. And their expected, their actual revenues and expenditures. So we are pretty much in the red right now, um. And here are Savannah, Springfield and Victoria. Which, um, like I said, this is all expected and on target. So there would be nothing to worry about yet.
Are you expecting one?
No, no. Uh, unless it's, I see this in quarter three, then I would, but no.
Okay.
Not a clear one. Um, so the, I reached to the, to the, uh, presentation. So conclusions, we are physically sound right now at, uh, first quarter. Uh, with the couple improvements, uh, presentation that, um, we, we did last year, uh, session and upcoming item in this session, we should be, um, better place infrastructure wise and planning for our investments, our expenses, uh, all our projects that we have, uh, for the city. Um, we will be, I, wait, I will be providing, um, different reports for the CIP now there, if it's approved later on today. As well as, uh, the investment policy, which kind of go hand in hand. So that would be nice to see a different report just solely on those things. Um, other than that, like I mentioned, this will be presented, uh, the actual presentation and all the details will coming up in our next agenda. And you can see all the line by line item, uh, for everything, for all the numbers that you see here, uh, tonight. So that will be the presentation for tonight. Um, unless you have any questions I can address tonight or, um, bring on when we bring the actual item to the board.
Questions? No, we're good. Appreciate it.
Alright.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
I appreciate the updates.
Just because we don't have questions doesn't mean we won't have them later. We're just gonna build up the tension in this suspense here. So moving on to item, uh, B consent agenda. Said all items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time determined by the mayor. So we have item B one and B two.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Moving on to C action items. Uh, C one, joint use agreement between Imperial Police Department and Imperial Valley College, uh, for shared use IVC facilities, Chief Real. So the, the request is to sign a consent agenda, um, actually consent agenda, so sign an MOU, and it, which is an agreement for use of the IVC program. The IVC law enforcement program has expanded in its use capabilities, modernity and being able to a, enhance the services that it provides for its law enforcement program. Um, I'm currently, I currently sit on the, as the president of the chiefs, we have another, a number of our employees currently instruct at the law enforcement program and we're looking to leverage that relationship in being able to expand some of the things that we allow our cadets to do by using their tractor, tactical facilities and classrooms and so on, in order to make for a better cadet training program.
Awesome.
Now, um, it's a trade-off, just you're helping them, so they're helping you. So that's why there's no
So.
Dollar signs nowhere.
There, there is no trade-off. They're just opening up, they're opening up to all agencies and in, in an agreement for use of their facilities.
Hoping they recruit.
As are we. Is this part of that bond of why they're, they're doing this? That I do not know. I wouldn't, I don't have enough information even to give you an answer. They're supposed to build a new whole public safety facility and get everybody there. There's, there, there's quite a bit in store for the expansion of that program to include uh, meeting the requirements for the law enforcement is getting ready to change its requirements. And they're moving to a modern law enforcement degree. Some of that's going to have to be facilitated necessarily through the college. And so with that, as they expand, there's a lot of state funding and funding sources that's going to help, uh, ex- expand a program that's, that's doing well locally and it's starting to be a draw for neighboring counties to include Riverside County. Cool. Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C two, adopt resolution number two zero two four dash sixty, approving amendment to the community development safety standards to include body, uh, cameras for Mr. Othon, water community development director.
Good evening, council. Um, as you may already know, about two years ago, the council approved the community development safety standards. And at that time, there was no need to implement, uh, body cams for staff. Now, after much thought, uh, we are recommending to add this equipment as a safety measure. Uh, we believe that if we incorp- incorporate this technology, um, it will demonstrate commitment to public safety practices and ensuring fair treatment to all community members. Um, the fiscal impact for the first year will be nine thousand and hundred and ninety dollars and four cents. Uh, that includes the purchasing of the equipment. And each additional year will be four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. This is, this equipment is similar to what PT is utilizing. Uh, and it's the, it's the same, it, it will be separate accounts, but it is the same system of, the same membership and same equipment. And we are getting the same deal, uh, as them. Um, who recommends approval of this amendment? And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Um, how many cameras are we getting?
Uh, four.
Okay.
Um, how long are we going to be, is there a requirement for retention of the records for the cameras?
Uh, we do have our own requirements. I don't remember the specifics. I think the minimum for, for us is uh, between three to five years.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm really happy to see this. I think our code enforcement is probably one of the more thankless jobs. I mean, nobody at all is ever, ever excited to come see a code enforcement officer at their door. So, um, happy to provide a little bit more safety for them.
Yes.
And accountability for our employees as well. So.
Appreciate your support.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
And a second.
Alright, please vote. Been a long time coming.
Are you gonna use all four?
No.
Um, we're gonna use at least three. The fourth one, it's, uh, we can use it, uh, just as needed. Um, but yeah, I'm pretty sure we're gonna use.
Eventually.
Got one for yourself.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Glad to see this. Moving on to item C three, adopt resolution two zero two four dash six two, approving the domestic water and sanitary sewer service outside of the city boundaries for APN zero six four zero two zero dash zero three zero. Mr. Mora.
Uh, yes, there has been a request for water and sanitary sewer service to a property outside city boundaries. The property is located in, uh, on one eleven Dalliot Lane. Um, and stat recommends approving the service outside the city boundaries and the agreement. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Isn't Dalliot Lane within the city?
Yeah.
This is the only property that is not within the city.
I love our city boundary maps. They're so great.
This is like one of those boundaries when they were drawing it, somebody had sneezed and it went right outside.
Yeah.
And they'll go on like the same routine as like Ironwood, the same payment. Paying everybody else, right?
I hope they haven't requested, uh, to be annexed into the city.
Where's the front door? Is it on Dalliot Lane?
Dalliot, it is, yes.
They've just been on the water this entire time?
And they would like to remain.
That's three hundred dollars a month or a year.
Well, yeah. Any other questions?
No.
Comments, concerns?
So moved.
Second. Second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Moving on to C four, approval of Republic Services price, uh, Republic's, Republic Services Cost Price Index, CPI adjustment for four percent for waste and recycling service in the city of Imperial effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Monriquez.
Mayor, council members, um, this is our contract that we have with our partners Republic Services, um. This is an ongoing contract, um, and we are recommending the approval based on the contract for four percent as its cap, as a maximum, um, being affected, uh, January first. This would include the services they're already providing and it has nothing to do with our presentation today.
Is this required in our contract to do it every year? It's one of the sliders?
Yes.
I hate having to raise these. I hate these every year.
Already required. Why, why does it come back to the board? I mean. Notify the public or?
It's, it's a public record. So I'm guessing that's why we would.
Maybe, I think there is a provision in the contract that calls for council approval. Um, but indeed the contract does contemplate that it would be approved.
What happens if we deny it? I mean, I hate, I don't, I don't like raising rates at all. But if we have to.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second, second.
Got a motion in us.
Second.
Soft second.
Motion carries.
And I know we went through this last time and, uh, there was a raise and increase, uh, increase and we did something different. At the end of the day, we still had to come back and do it. So. We don't have a choice.
Thank you. I'll, I'll check if it needs to come back every time, since single time, uh, so. I'll leave it with KDC.
Yeah, we've ended up getting more.
We'll like, look at it. And I know there's some things, the, the contract term is coming up too. So this would be the importance of letting the folks in the public know when we do the original approval, but to avoid coming back if you don't have a choice. We're locked in and you are locked in, like you said.
Thank you. Moving on to item C five, adopt resolution number two zero two four dash six one, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three development impact fee funding report. Mr. Monriquez?
Um, Mayor, council member, this is just, um, to record the report that, um, went to the Deser Valley Builders Association, that we filed all our, um, um, development impact fees. Um, this usually, since we're talking, this usually goes on consent, but for some reason it went to action. So this is just the report, how we filled it out and we submitted and they approved and they said everything is okay. It's just following. It's just following.
Just by, by law, um, these are, when they pull a permit, there's certain amounts paid, uh, in impact fees. And they go into the accounts, and every year we keep these up, and it is required by law.
Correct.
That you, you take a look and approve the resolution.
So moved.
I got a motion second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to item C six, adopt resolution number two zero. Two four dash five two, adopting a five-year capital plan program budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, through twenty twenty-nine. Mr. Mondecas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, again, um, this is the CIP percentage, um, actual, um, action item. Um, that came out from, um, last, um, council's, um, presentation. So we do have a total of five, fifty point seven million. Dollars have been approved, uh, for the next five years. It's a total of forty-three projects. Um, like I mentioned before, some of the projects have been already approved by council individually. Um, some already started, some are near completion, um, so this is just a. Update from, uh, previous, uh, capital improvement projects. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions?
And again, I, I do want to mention, just because it's in the capital project, doesn't mean it's already approved, we'll, uh, every particular. Project needs to come back to the board, uh, and make sure we have the, the. Finances for the, to complete that project.
Thank you. Questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, approve change order number two for the pavement rehabilitation of various road projects in the city of Imperial. Bid number two zero two four dash eight, um, Mr. David Dale, Public Services Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, as I've been kind of updating the council in the past couple of meetings, uh. I've informed the council that we have gone over some of the quantities, uh, the original estimate of the paving project. It was based on, uh, an engineering diagram which shows three-quarter inch leveling course. Well, we, at the end of the day, we're, we basically averaged one point two inches, which doesn't sound like a lot, but over the. Area of the project, it actually is quite a bit of act, uh, of extra asphalt. Um, during the project, as, as we progressed, it became clear that if we put the three-quarter inches of asphalt, that the roads. Would not be level, uh, and they would still be rough, and, uh, knowing the council's agenda on getting the streets in good shape. We made the call to, to put the, the amount of asphalt that would be required to get a nice level surface. Uh, two of the streets, Myrtle and Labourshire in particular. Literally took almost three inches of asphalt to get them to the, to the level that we needed them to have a, a flat. Surface that would drain the water, so if you look at Myrtle now, it has a nice curve to it, and it has a nice crown to it. There were places that I saw that there were three, almost four inches to get that to that level, and because of the, the roughness of the surface of the pavement. And so, uh, this is an estimate, it's about, it's gonna basically as, end up being about fifteen percent of the contract price. Which is something that's, I mean, it's more than what I would consider normal, um, but, um. It is what it is at this point, also because of the economies of scale. We've also added a little bit of slurry sealing to the, to other areas of the, of the city. Uh, we have a budget for the city hall parking lot, we budgeted forty thousand dollars. And because we could use this contractor to do it was the economies of scales and to borrow the, the words from the chief, we leveraged. The, the, the project, and so, um, I could actually do. All the cities' parking lots for the amount that I was gonna do for just one city hall parking lot, so we were able to do city hall. Uh, library, um, police, and the IV Transit Center, um, parking lots. So at, at the economies of scale we're using for this project, it's a large project. If we were to bring in the slurry seal company just for this project, so it would be three to four times the cost, so leveraging that, um. And so, this isn't the final, final pri, price, um, but I know I wanted to get this through to council. Uh, now, we probably will have a final change order when we give you all of the final quantities and, and know the exact estimates. Um, but at this point, this is where we think we're going to end up. Now. As at the, in your last sheet of the staff report, shows the fiscal impact. Um, general fund costs three point one one million, EDA funds, six hundred thousand. Water enterprise funds, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. And sewer enterprise fund costs, uh, three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirty. In total, project cost of four point three one seven million, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. So the original, well, I had a typo in the first time we brought the staff, at three point nine nine, it was actually. That was probably prophetic in nature, um, so. What we, uh, what we would like to do, if this is approved, um, is work with finance. Into making a repayment schedule to the general fund through SB one. Over a period of certain number of years, twenty years, whatever that end up being with interest, we think we can probably do that, so. It is, is not, it is unusual to use general funds for a street project, but we could self-bond, is what I'm kind of proposing, so. That's the, uh, um, report, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions?
No, I mean, usually I don't like change orders, but with how bad our streets were within the city, I mean. You, if you're gonna spend the money, you might as well do it right, and so I appreciate staff making sure that it's done right. Or the drainage is there, I mean, our roads look great, you know, I get complaints about the traffic and people having to be routed, and I remind them, you know. Short-term loss, long-term gain, so, um, but no, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, any questions?
No, just, um, on Myrtle, how much do you think the semis. Try, um, going down there affects that, and you think the new asphalt, it will wear a lot better?
I do, because what we, and I didn't mention it, I've mentioned it over the last couple of meetings, but we're using a, a system called ARAM, which is. And that particular one was a system two. ARAM systems help prevent the cracks from coming back up through the surface, and that's why we're using this. Instead of just putting asphalt on top of it, and so, and we actually, at that point, uh, at the Tuckers, uh, they were putting in a two-inch line. And we cut the asphalt, and the asphalt was something like six inches thick, it was crazy, but it was in at the wrong elevations, you know, it was very rough, so. At this point, I think we have a road that is pretty substantial, Myrtle Road. So I feel pretty confident. The road, it's got a lot of good asphalt on it now, plus the ARAM level, so, yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, just because I've been asked that, and that's kind of the answer I was given, but I.
I would say these roads should last the city thirty years, like these roads, they went from our worst roads to now our best roads, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From worst to first.
You know, it, it's funny, I made the comment right now, here to Katie, that driving Myrtle Road was driving like, riding a pump truck, just you didn't need. To do anything, just get on one end of the road and ride your bike to the other, because the bumper, the elevations were so bad. Uh, but just like Katie and everybody else, I'm not a fan of change orders, but when these change orders come to benefit our residents, benefit our city.
We have a public comment, sorry.
Yes.
You gotta, you gotta come to the mic. Yes, that's the rules.
Put your name and address, please.
Tanya Bonas, five eleven North D. Um, lately, because they're working on fifteenth, those semis are driving down D Street, it's just been surried, is that gonna mess it up? And then be left that way?
Uh, I can't really answer that for sure, but, I mean, depending on the, the depth of D Street and the thickness of the asphalt, I don't know what that is at this moment, but. That, that was, the slurry seal that you're talking about was actually provided to the city at no cost by the gas company. So we were really blessed to have a lot of slurry sealing being done at no cost, and that's one of the streets that was done. So, yeah.
I didn't know if it was the same that you were talking about.
Thank you very much, um.
I want to second that if I have.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll take that second, but yeah, saying that, um, you know, those, um. I think the, this change order is definitely is gonna put us ahead, so thank you for everything. So please vote, got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Item C eight, approve change order number one for the Aitken Boulevard Rehabilitation Project between Valory Way. And old SR eighty-six, bid project number two zero two four dash three, Mr. David Dale, Public Services Director.
So this is the unenviable task of a second change order request, and it is a substantial request, however. It, it appears to me that there was not really any master planning when it came to the sewer system over the years. And as development came, they were considered as islands and how those could be served, instead of sort of master planning. This, this item came to my attention because of requests for service, for sewer service, and I started looking into it. And, um, talking to staff, this particular section of sewer. In the city is the worst in terms of sewer plugs and maintenance that the city has, and so. I knew there was a project on Aitken Boulevard that was about ready to start, and so we started talking to community development. About how we could get this sewer line replaced before the pavement, which makes sense. Um, unfortunately, that re, that results in a change order request because of the timing. Uh, of the project, this funding is supposed to be spent before May of twenty twenty-five, so. If we go to bid and we do all those things, we will, the funding source for this issue will be, will be problematic. The whole project extends from, uh, Shiloh or Wall Road, what we call Shiloh Road. All the way to old SR eighty-six, north to the Claypool Station. I think you have it in your staff report, the map. So the proposal is, in this particular change order is just for the area that's in Aitken, in Aitken Boulevard. Because we want to limit the change order, we want to have, mostly have it bid if we can, and so. We used our on-call service agreement that was, uh, approved by council, and we're able to get the whole design. This, this has been already designed for less than two percent of the engineer's cost estimate, it was a great deal, so it's already been designed. Um, for the most part, and we have a cost, we, we received the cost, the proposal cost from the contractor. Was one point three million approximately, and after, uh, discussions line item, line item with the contractor, um, it's been reduced to one point one. A little over one point one million. Um, this was, is pretty close to what I thought we were going to end up with on this project, it's a. A, a deep sewer line in, uh, traffic, which will require shoring, and, um, we will be connecting. The pump stations from the, I think it's the Wildflower subdivisions and the Sky Ranch subdivisions into this new sewer, sewer system. When it's fully completed, we will be able to disengage the Clay, uh, the Claypool, the Clark Pump Station. So that's a huge, that's a huge win in terms of master planning, reducing one whole pump station. It will still be there, because I think it serves like two or three, uh, units, very minimal, but at this moment, that. Claypool Station is in conflict with the Clark Pump Station, they can't really run at the same time. And so this will be a great, uh, way of moving forward with this, the sewer system. Um, a, a big issue here is that that sewer line that we're talking about here is impacted already. In terms of how many connections are already connected to it, so it's surcharged, it's an eight-inch line that serves over seven hundred and fifty units. And so, that really needs to be upsized, in fact, the city has already issued will-serv letters. In excess of what we already have there, uh, that's already surcharged, so we really can't take any more development in that area. Until this line is upsized, so I will be happy to stand for any question on this, if you have them.
Questions? Questions? No, so this project, it's gonna go right after the first of the year?
I, it, it actually, we've already been ramping up with the contractor in anticipation of approval, so if, if this is approved. They're already, they're already starting to ramp up and, and to move on that project.
And the line is right down the middle or on the?
It's on the south edge of Aitken Boulevard, almost by the sidewalks. Yeah, it's very close.
Where's the jet fuel line at?
Right next to it.
Yeah. The one that goes to the Navy Base.
I, we, we're gonna have to pothole, that, that's part of the, that's part of the project cost, is potholing and finding all those lines.
Like an eight-inch line there.
Yeah, so.
But, uh, is that gonna impact our businesses on the south side of Aitken Road?
Uh, we, we're hoping that, well, so we'll install the new line parallel to the existing. And so when it is completely, uh, installed and approved and accepted, then we will start connecting it to the existing system. There shouldn't be much, if any, uh, uh, they shouldn't have much of effect at all, um, so we will connect the streets one at a time, there are four connections. On this, I might also mention that those, those force mains that come all the way from, you know, Austin Road, approximately all the way to Clark. Um, on force mains, sewer force mains, what you end up getting is hydrogen form, uh, hydrogen, um. Sulf, sulfide dioxide gas, uh, hydrogen sulfide gas, excuse me, uh, forming in the pipes. And so if you drive by the Clark Pump Station sometimes, and I have done, it smells, you can smell it. So this will actually also help that cause as well, because we'll be cutting the force main in half, basically. By, by rerouting it into Wall Road instead of Clark, so there's a lot of benefits to this, um, it is. A part of the CIP projects that, um, were approved by council, so.
And then, my last question is, with the open trench, are businesses going to be able to have access to driveways?
So, yes, so they're gonna do it section by section, it won't be, the whole thing will not be open, so they'll be doing section by section, and the driveways. If needed, there will be iron plates put on, installed, so.
Thank you. No more questions? We got a motion second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. Thank you.
One, one, motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All right, with that, moving on to item C eight, cancellation of regularly scheduled coun, city council meeting of January first due to the New Year holiday, Mr. Morita.
Um, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council, New Year's Day this year falls on a regularly scheduled council day, our suggestion would be to not have that meeting. Uh, and the intention would be to, uh, uh, hopefully avoid having to call a special meeting. Uh, we're trying to keep the December eighteenth meeting, uh, light, and, uh, a suggestion was made to. Uh, put items on the consent to the extent, uh, that would be appropriate. Uh, so at this point, we're hoping to not have to have a special meeting, uh, but obviously, if, if the need should arise, we would let you know. But in the meantime, to plan not to have a meeting on January one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
All right, thank you very much. With that, move on to department reports, Mr. Mora.
Um, real quick, as, as we continue innovating the community development, uh, you know, purchasing. E, e, equipment, the cameras and whatnot, not so long ago, we purchased a drone for, uh, building inspections. Uh, we deploy, we, we train and deploy the drone, uh, and, uh, uh. For safety purposes, I mean, for not going up in, in the ladder to the roofs and whatnot, and, and it's been very, very helpful. Uh, we're gonna be uploading a, uh, video on social media pretty soon, so that way you are able to see, and the residents are able to see what. What we're doing with the drone, uh, has been, um, really good, uh, time. Uh, has cut time in inspections as well, we can, uh, and. Four, six homes at a time, in no time, the camera is pretty good, and, and the equipment is amazing, and that, thanks to, to the council. Uh, for supporting the community development.
Glad to hear that.
I have a question for you too, so on twelfth and Labourshire, where the new apartments are. Um, every time, I've noticed there's like a pileup of cars parking, even on the Canal Bank and down. Twelfth Street and then along Labourshire, do we know when that parking lot for the apartments is gonna be open?
Uh, don't have that yet, uh, we've been issuing some temporary occupancies, but I think mostly because of the finances, but let me. Yeah, I, I'll give you an update, I'll give an update to city managers, I can give you an update to all of them.
I've been getting complaints from some of the neighbor, some of the people in the area, and it is super congested right there. Cars on both sides and.
Yeah, and we also have the, the, uh, the construction crews working on it as well, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little bit of everything, so I'll give you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dale?
Nothing really more to add, other than, I mean, we've just been focusing on the street project, getting that, uh, complete, it's, it is almost complete now. Um, all of. Um, all of, most of the streets have now been slurry sealed and now we're just raising the utilities to grade. And it, I'm really happy with the, uh, the outcome of the project, so.
So I was asked today about silverwood. Silverwood was ground down, but there's no, nothing on there?
So that was part of the change order that was approved, the, the first change order. And, um, we, we are going, that is going to be completed in the very near future. So that is just a one and a half inch overlay. There's no ARAM on, involved in that particular area. We will be, uh, slurry sealing the bike path as well as part of this project. So that's pretty, pretty cool. But, um, yeah.
The bike path, they're gonna cover it with thermoplastic, huh?
Nope, no, no thermoplastic, not on that one.
Making sure. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. Mr. Lopez?
So, um, first, I wanna thank every department here involved with the chaos that is the parade and traffic planning. And, you know, between police and public services and everybody else involved. It really does take a lot of, uh, minds to kind of come up with the best ways to mitigate, uh, pedestrian crosswalks uh, that don't exist, um, and slowing traffic down through the city and during that time. So, um, we do have a traffic advisory out there right now on social media that, that, uh, will be adding a, we'll be lighting up with light towers, fourth and sixth, uh, which we know that people do cross through there, even though they're not designated crosswalks. We're also putting a, uh, temporary stop sign, uh, on Fourth Street. Uh, that, uh, so to allow people to slow down. Everything will be a flashing red light at all intersections from Nackle down, uh, through the main corridor of the city on eighty six. So, you know, with between police and public services staff and everybody else, uh, trying to mitigate the, uh, traffic following the parade after the parade is over. Uh, channeling people out of, uh, Belfort, with Belfort being punched, who's gonna help out a lot. Fifteen eighty six, uh, D Street through fifteenth. So hopefully this one will run a little bit smoother as far as, uh, the human error factor, people driving into Imperial Avenue after the parade's over. So, um, that's gonna happen next Friday, six to eight. Uh, hope to see all y'all there. Uh, and then the next day, um, Christmas in a small town. Um, which, you know, we have fifty, fifty tons of snow scheduled for four in the morning that day. So, uh, that's always fun to, to make sure that that, uh, goes off without a hitch to, uh, uh, five or six semi trucks. Getting them out of the, uh, area before the event starts. But, um, join everybody from the public as well as you guys. Uh, we'll have the mayor for the, for the council and mayor for the day also helping announce uh, the awardees of the judges' choices for the parade. Uh, and then as well as now honoring Mrs. Long as part of that, uh, event on Saturday. So I'm, I'm excited for that. She, I do remember her from when I started here. She was at everything we did, uh, and also singing at just about everything she could. So uh, it'd be, it'd be good to honor her, uh, during one of our events. So.
I was making that comment. In twenty nineteen, she was our grand marshal for the parade.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was very nice. Um, thank you very much for that. One more question for you, Tony. I know where you can, you said we're gonna have stop signs on fourth. Are we gonna have any on the, on the north end?
So, no, so, so we figured, uh, when we're talking with, uh, PD, is that, uh, from Nackle to fifteenth and from fifteenth to Berione and Berione to fourth, we wouldn't have enough of a slowdown. We're also putting digital di- displays on the north and south end of town, uh, letting everybody know to expect delays through the main corridor on eighty six. So we figured with those measures in place with the flashing reds, we were able to slow people down, uh, to allow for pedestrian crosswalks. As far, as well as illuminating the crosswalks with light tower generators, um, to allow for visibility.
All right. Sounds like a plan. Thank you very much for the hard work.
Nothing to report.
Nothing?
Well, there's a lot of things, uh, nothing really, uh, to report. I mean, in our, in the department memo, we provided an update of all the projects, as you know. We have probably like sixteen projects open at this point. Everything moving forward, some of those because of the season or because we're working on different activities are kind of slowed down. But, uh, so far, everything moving forward. And as I mentioned also in the department memo report, um, with some, uh, configurations that we done a couple of weeks ago, we considered the broadband, uh, wireless network is completed. So, um, of course, it's gonna, we're gonna close the project and just put it as a regular activities as part of our department. It's a, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of investment that the council, um, approved. So now is the time to maintain it, um, up and running. We have around, we'll have around forty five, forty four, uh, digital cameras, high definition. So, uh, I think we just one or two missing to install. We have more radios to install around the city, but the main, uh, network, uh, it's up and running. Uh, I'm very happy with that. Um, so and again, other projects are moving forward. So busy, busy, but I mean.
Good. Yeah. Glad to hear that. Always moving forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chief?
Actually, the only thing I would have between last council and this council, every year we get inspected by the California Peace Officer Safety and standards and training. Um, they go through their background files, make sure that we're compliant with all of the regulations that are passed down at the state level. Um, we passed with flying colors this year. And that's it. It, it's a testament to cooperation and teamwork. The two main players in that process are Jeremy Sergeant, Sergeant Schaper and Adrian H R Kristen as well. Um, without that cooperation and the people agreeing to, and often working together at the last second to hurry these applicants through, it's a, it's a testament to teamwork and it's, it's a, quite an accomplishment. It is not fun to be on the receiving end of a, of a failing grade through post because it, it, uh, it, it could be a pain, but it was a good job.
Good. Glad to hear that. Thank you. Chief Lancer?
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, the, uh, deputy chief position will finally be filled effective January second. So our